Need a second, second by Ms. Newman. Any questions on the special meeting? With that being none, all in favor, four zero. Motion carry. Okay, presentation agenda, mayor's, any mayor's report?
No mayor's.
No mayor's report. Okay, council reports, Mr. Counsel report, Mr. Lawrence? None, Ms. Newman?
No question.
Dr. Tisdale, none, and I also have none. Okay, we're gonna move directly into the public agenda. I'm gonna ask the council if they have any questions first, then once the council speaks. I want all the people who are gonna be for, well, we got a total of ten minutes for people who are for, ten minutes for the people who are against, then we're gonna have five-minute rebuttals each for the people who's for and the people who's against, and then we'll move on from there. Okay, any comments on it, Mr. Lawrence?
I'd rather listen to them speak than comment afterwards.
Okay, Ms. Newman? Same, Dr. Tisdale?
I would suggest that maybe you increase the, those folks who wanna speak in favor and opposition, I would urge you to increase that from ten minutes to maybe as much as twenty minutes each with a five-minute rebuttal. I just know that this is a hot topic at the west end of town, but that, those are my thoughts.
That's your thoughts, what do you think, Mr. Lawrence?
I disagree.
Disagree?
He's the same former, we always do.
Okay, we'll keep the ten ten and five five, that'll give us fifteen minutes each, total of thirty minutes total. Okay, with anyone on my left, and I'm gonna give each person three minutes to speak, three minutes on this one to speak, so we can have some form of time limit, all the people who are for, come on up to the microphone, you got three minutes per person.
My name is Dennis Stiefel, I'm the project engineer and applicant for the project. Just wanted to give you a brief explanation, most of the folks here have become aware of the project, we've had meetings and discussions on the project, but some of you guys were not at the meetings that we've had, and so I thought I'd just brief you on some of the basic details in just a couple of minutes. We're talking about a forty-three acre piece of property at the south end of Pops Ferry Road Bridge.
Could you stop his time for a second? We can hardly hear, or we can give him another microphone if we-
Is any better?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's good.
Okay, I'll just hold it.
Okay, go ahead.
So, the piece of property is on the east side of Pops Ferry Road, and the north side of Atkinson Road is essentially tucked in the corner there on the south side of the Pops Ferry Road Bridge. It's owned by Dr. Bertuzzi, the property's fairly wooded, it's been bush hogged, it's there's some nice attractive trees on it, live oak trees, magnolia trees, there's some commercial property within this forty-three acres, and there's also some single-family residential zone property in this forty-three acre tract. Essentially, what we're doing is we're proposing, and you'll see pictures, we have exhibits that we can show you, but essentially, we have a piece of property that we're trying to transition from Sailor Estates subdivision, which is existing and built out, to Pops Ferry Road, which is heavily trafficked and commercial. And so the idea is to start a single-family residential adjacent to the single-family residential area, and then transition to multifamily, and then commercial when you're on the adjacent to Pops Ferry Road or close to it. We believe we've got a very nice plan here, it's transitional, it starts with single-family residential, where it backs up to the existing single-family residential, it transitions into a little higher density and multifamily, and then commercial adjacent to Pops Ferry Road. There's an approximate width of six hundred feet minimum between the Sailor Estates subdivision residence property lines and the multifamily. So everything within six hundred feet of the existing residents in Sailor Estates is single-family residential. The idea is to help protect the folks that live there in a Sailor Estates subdivision. All the, the design will be high-end, the plan here is not to have just inexpensive tract homes, the developer wants to do a heavily landscaped project with big green areas, park spaces, water features, lakes, things like that. He's, Mr. Bertuzzi, Dr. Bertuzzi lives on the property, he's gonna stay on the property, so he's gonna be driving through this project for the rest of his life, and so he's made a personal mission to make sure this project is done very, very nice and very high-end. We're very happy with what we've got, the plan, it's first-class, we've done a lot of projects in the city that you're well aware of, and I would say this is as good, if not nicer, than any of the ones that we've done before. Very similar in transition, you know, we're talking about transitional zoning or transitional project here, we did Lawn Falls and Taylor Oaks, which is a beautiful community, we've done the, you know, the Auburn Landing apartment complex right there next to it, and then right next to it is the Walmart neighborhood, so you see the transition from commercial to multifamily to residential.
Mr. Stiefel, your time is-
Very similar plan.
Thank you, Mr. Stiefel.
Thank you.
Anyone else on my left, four? Anyone else for, would like to speak? No one else is for? Okay, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask anyone who's against, come on up and speak.
My name is Suzanne Patac, and I live at twenty, or 429 Sailor Drive, right on the corner of Bonneville and Sailor. Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to voice our concerns. The entire north side of Atkinson is zoned low-density, showing a variance that is a precedence. Apparently, the deed restriction that I read at the last meeting, containing the zoning restriction that is in effect until 2024, zoning to remain low-density is going to be ignored. I strongly object. Here are a couple more reasons why I strongly object to this project. Let me take a breath, we had, we got caught in that traffic. Infrastructure is not currently sustainable. After the funeral of Robert McKeithrin, I was near the corner of Atkinson and Pops Ferry trying to cross the street, traffic was backed up everywhere, then the bridge went up. Imagine the backup, Atkinson all the way to Jim Money, Pops Ferry to Pass Road, I don't know how far it went down Old Bay or on the north side of the bridge, but believe me, it was extensive. People were patient because they had just honored a fallen hero. Unfortunately, this is the same kind of backups that will occur every day with the inclusion of this very dense project. This project is an excellent example of putting the horse before the cart. Why not start with the bridge and build out from there? What's the hurry? We have been shown two different plats, the one presented to the planning commission has twenty-two lots on the Sailor Road fence line, and other, the other presented to us at the ward meeting shows eighteen. Also, that plat legend on the one presented to the planning commission says apartments. On the one presented to the ward meeting, apartments were omitted from the legend, which is it, bait and switch? I have several other objections about this project and have little time to discuss them. I realize you cannot fight City Hall, but can we take up this battle in 2024 as stated in the deed restriction? Lastly, can someone please tell me where the meeting was advertised? Also, the two little signs on the property are from the March Planning and Zoning Meeting, no mention of this meeting at all. This affects more than just our little neighborhood, it affects, it affects the entire community. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else would like to speak against?
My name is Deanne Stevens, and I live at 2189 George Walton Drive, which is just down from Sailor Drive, right at the four-way stop on Atkinson. This is supposed to be low-density area that was put aside, and this is not a low-density development. The idea is absurd, if I can be frank about it. The traffic already on Atkinson Road is just horrible, particularly when school is in and school buses are running and the bridge is up. You can't get out. I have to. Also, the idea that this is going to be developed, I challenge you to do an environmental study on this piece of property. It used to be that we could walk through there, and there are pitcher plants on there, I know that doesn't sound like much, but those are protected native Mississippi species on that property. I don't know if there's been any kind of a study done on that. Schools are already overcrowded in this area, where are those children gonna go? That's gonna put more buses on the road and more traffic busing them back and forth to where they need to go. I don't know if there's been a study about the impact on the school system, I'm assuming they would have to go to Pops Ferry Elementary. I also think that until we have a idea of what's gonna be happening with the Pops Ferry Bridge, and this development is allowed to go forward, and you have commercial development on that Pops Ferry Strip, what's gonna happen when that bridge comes through? Will there be any kind of buyout with that property? What's going to go on with that? This is just, I'm not against development, but what I think, a hundred and ten houses on that piece of property, plus apartments, plus townhomes, plus a strip of commercial development, it's ludicrous. It's just too much for that piece of property in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one, I'm gonna allow one more, and then I'll start with the rebuttal from, with Mr. Stiefel.
My name is Shannon Pierce. I've got a different problem. I have a different problem than a lot of these other people. I live on Sailor Drive, I live at 437, I back up right where Phase One is gonna start. Now, we've lived there for twenty-two years. We have a pool, we've always had that pool there, and I have a screened enclosure over the pool. We have spent thousands of dollars this year re-marsading, re-tiling, and getting that pool back in shape and ready to go this year. I would, I have a enclosure over the pool, I have my pool equipment outside of it, on the side, I have my air conditioning out there, and I know that I'm gonna have a lot of red dust coming right back toward me, and I don't know what to do about it, except to deal with it. If I have to, I will get people to come and re-clean it, I know that that dust is gonna affect my pool because it'll land on the enclosure, and when it rains, it's gonna come right down into my pool. That's like clay, that dust is, it's gonna clog everything up. So, I'll get it cleaned up when that happens, and these people that clean it up will submit a bill to me, and you can tell Dr. Bertuzzi that I will submit the bill to him. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm gonna switch back over to the rebuttal, the rebuttal, let this, is coming up? Okay, okay. One more.
Can I take a turn now?
Yes, sir, come on.
I'm Robert Pierce, I live at 437 Sailor Drive. I'm here today to ask the council to keep the zoning on the Bertuzzi property as it is. I came here twenty-three years ago to work at the Block CVA, and bought a home in a nice quiet neighborhood with approximate ten thousand square foot lots, and I've been very happy there the way it is. This change in zoning is not gonna help us any, the people that live there, it's gonna be apartments, condominiums, don't know how high, didn't buy my property to live in a neighborhood like that, even though it's gonna be brand-new. My understanding was that Mr. Sailor and Dr. Bertuzzi signed an agreement that there would be no development on Bertuzzi's property until 2024, and that was filed and notarized, whatever else you have to do, the council should have a copy of it. I would like to see if you can enforce that, that would be fine, or if you can't, I'd like to hear from the city attorney why. So, that's about all I have, thank you very much for listening.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna, at this time, ask Mr. Stiefel to come back up for a rebuttal for the four or five minutes on your rebuttal, and then the remaining time will be, the remaining time that we have in this hour is for citizen comments.
I jotted down a couple of notes, and these comments were essentially the same types of comments that we received, or very similar, at the meeting that we had with Ward Three a few, couple, a few weeks ago. And just quickly touching on some of the comments that I just heard regarding this, the deed restriction, we are not ignoring the deed restriction, we know very well what the deed restriction says, they are correct, there is a deed restriction, it does stipulate till the year 2024, but it specifically says that everything within the six hundred feet of the west property line of Sailor Estates is to be single-family residential, that's what we've done, we have complied with that specifically, so we are not ignoring that deed restriction. Additionally, to make sure we're not confusing anyone, we actually contacted Mr. Sailor, we have a letter in hand from Mr. Sailor confirming that we have met the intent of the gentleman's agreement and the deed restriction. So he agrees, and Dr. Bertuzzi both agree, that the deed restriction requirements have been satisfied with the plan as it's proposed. There was a comment regarding the bridge right-of-way, have we taken that into account? The answer is yes, the bridge right-of-way, we were able to get preliminary drawings from engineers that have worked with the MDOT, and we have incorporated that the layout that we have before the council today takes into account the additional right-of-way that will be acquired for purposes of building the bridge, so that will not be an issue in the future. There was a comment briefly regarding rentals and apartments, there are no apartments, even though there are some folks that seem to think there are apartments, there are no apartments proposed on this project site, there are townhouses, there are condominiums, but there's no rental units per se, and that's, that's the direction that the developer would like to pursue. There was a comment about environmental study, we do environmental studies on every project we do, we do extensive surveys on not only wetlands, there are some wetlands on the property, we will deal with that through the proper channels, the Corps of Engineers, the DEQ, there are close to a dozen engineers that have to review these plans, and biologists, and that's standard on every project we do, and so, yes, there will be environmental study, it will not only account for the wetlands impacts, but it will also account for endangered species and things of that nature, so, yes, those aspects will be taken into account. There was a question regarding easements, and at the Ward Three meeting, and also, I think I mentioned, it was, I heard someone mention the concern about the easements, there's an existing fifteen-foot easement, and we have a copy of the Sailor Estates plat, but there's an existing fifteen-foot easement that is situated within the backyards of the Sailor Estates subdivision, but there's also an additional twenty-five-foot easement that is positioned adjacent to the same property line, the rear property line, but it goes into Mr. Bertuzzi, Dr. Bertuzzi's property. So there's a total of forty feet of easements, both, you know, the fifteen-foot easement within the Sailor Estates subdivision and the twenty-five feet within the Dr. Bertuzzi's property, so the total of forty feet there, no permanent structures can be constructed within this forty-foot easement, and so the houses will be at least that far, any permanent structures will be at least that far away from any permanent structures in the Sailor Estates subdivision, and likely they'll be farther than that away, but at least that And as far as traffic goes, we have discussed this at some length at the meeting in Ward Three, and I just wanna reiterate that it's, that we have, the developer has submitted in writing his willingness to work with the city, cooperate with the city, and providing additional right-of-way if necessary to widen and lengthen designated turning lanes on Atkinson Road to alleviate not only existing traffic problems, but to facilitate traffic into the future as this project takes place. So we don't, and we've also, we're also quite agreeable with closing down, not using the Bonneville connection, there's a sort little road that ties into the mid part of Sailor Estates subdivision, we can block that off so that contractors do not use that for construction purposes, and it's at the city's pleasure, they can either permanently close that down, or they can put a Knox box on it, but we're willing to work with them on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna open it, open the floor up for all citizen comments, and anyone is welcome to come back up for the three minutes for the remainder time that we have. Is there anyone else on my left that would like to come up and speak? Anyone on my left?
There aren't many more arguments to be made that haven't already been made in the previous meetings, you've heard them all. However, on the way here, to come and speak about the traffic nightmare you're about ready to create in that area, I was stuck in traffic, and I was late. This city is not paying attention to the job it needs to be doing. I've lived in too many communities, and yes, I've lived in about twenty-five different places, that have ignored, the infrastructure and the roads have never caught up. The cities I've lived in that put the roads and the infrastructure first have flourished. Every time someone comes to visit, even my wife, the first time I brought her here, I described this town as a town with two roads, Highway Ninety and Pass Road, and that's about it. On the way here, I did exactly what I'm trying to avoid in our neighborhood. I'm going down Ninety, I cut a cross over to Father Ryan and go through somebody's nice little neighborhood like other line of cars that was doing the same thing. Father Ryan used to be a very nice peaceful street, it's not anymore, and you can't even use Irish Hill anymore, especially with it being closed. Your constituents have come to you to ask for help, to avoid this problem. Your constituents are voters, and they know people, and they vote too. But I will be very vocal with this, moving forward, if this plan gets passed as-is. And if Bonneville gets opened, I will be even more vocal, 'cause it's not right. Again, as people in this room have said, no one disagrees with Mr. Bertuzzi's right to develop his property, but to go for the profit at that point to inconvenience his neighbors, to affect their property values, and we all know this stats, most people's net worth is tied up in their homes, and the people on that street are mostly of retirement age or approaching it, and could very well affect their futures. He wants to park in his front yard, then build a park. He doesn't need condos and residential over there in his front yard, he can have a nice, lovely, low-density neighborhood. High-end, believe me, it's a beautiful piece of property, people pay the money for those lots.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anyone else on my left? Anyone else on my left?
My name is Joe Patac, 429 Sailor. I just have one question, I mean, I've been up here harping about the traffic and everything, every meeting we come here, but one person has come up here and stood for the project. Dr. Bertuzzi's not even here, for the project. Here you have five or six people that come and talk against it. I gave you a petition, the first meeting we had, of a hundred signatures of people who don't want the project, of people that live all around the proposed subdivision. One question is, how can you justify a yes vote on this, when you've got all these people against it, all the traffic problems you're gonna have, and you got one person to show up for a yes on the project? It doesn't make any sense to me. If any of you can explain it to me, I'd be happy to listen, but it just doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to my right? Come on up.
Deanne. Okay, I just have two comments to Mr. Stiefel's comments, okay? First of all, he said that he's well within the six hundred feet. Now, this is according to his own drawing, which unfortunately, I didn't know I was gonna need copies for anybody, I hope you guys have got them, if you haven't, I'll email it to you. But anyway, it shows three hundred feet goes about the middle of the property from Dr. or Mr. Sailor's property. It's in his own writings, not mine, I didn't do anything about it, okay? And also, he said that there was never any mention of apartments. Well, on his original, okay, that's what I mean about confusing, okay, he's got two different plats here, all right, one he shows at one meeting, one he shows at another meeting, and I don't know what he's talking about, but anyway, on this, on the original plat that came with the package that you got from the planning and zoning, it says apartments in the legend, okay? So, I don't know, what are we trying to do here, you know? I mean, all I wanna do is have less confusion, I just wanna keep my home, my home, period.
Thank you, ma'am. Did I miss anyone out there? Did I miss anyone?
My name is Jerry Caldwell, I live at 429 Carmegill. I didn't come with a prepared speech, but just from the observation of everything that's been said so far, it's the same problem that permeates our whole city. We've got inadequate facilities to accommodate what we've got right now. This city has grown so much even since Katrina, at every intersection you get to, you have to sit there and sit there and sit there, and to come in with a project like this at the foot of that bridge, it's already completely jammed up there, you can try to get out of La Bontaire subdivision to go north on that bridge, you might sit there until forty-five or fifty cars come down off of that bridge before you can even make a left turn to get out of there. I live at, as soon as you get into La Bontaire subdivision, there's a stop sign at the end of La Bontaire Boulevard, and you either gotta go right or you gotta go left, and I watch those people go through that stop sign continually. Mr. Miller could make up- Mr. Miller could make a fortune of setting a policeman out there and writing tickets just on the people that'll go, and it's people that are avoiding the intersection down there at Atkinson Road and Pops Ferry. They don't wanna sit there and wait for that light, and if you don't get a left-turn signal if you wanna go east on Atkinson, you've had to lick because the cars are lined up city stream all the way up to Pops Ferry Road, or Pass Road. It's, it's absurd that we've let our city get to the point, we don't have this adequate infrastructure to support what we got right now, and I think it was envisioned here tonight, all these gentlemen were having to hustle to get here, and I see the mayor finally made it, but he had to fight all this traffic too. I think that's the general consensus of the, of the whole populace of this area. And West Biloxi is just as bad as downtown Biloxi and every other place you go. You go up on Pops Ferry Road, it's the same thing. Go up there to Cedar Lake and try to set through that traffic. Even over at, at Pass Road and, and Dubai's Road, same situation at night, they're lined up for block to block. And I think it's absurd that we continue to wanna develop these areas with such adverse jamming up of things and compounding our problem to the point it's just utterly absurd, and I agree with the gentleman that made that statement. It's absurd that we continue to approve stuff that just compounds the problem worse and we're not getting it fixed. I mean, this whole city's in a mess right now, and Highway Ninety and Pass Road are the two, you know what they are, east and west, and that's, that's all, how you're gonna get anyplace, and, and they're constantly jammed. I got into the same mess out there on Father Ryan, if he alluded to, and the cars coming out of Keesler, and they're wanting to turn left, they want to turn right down at, at Highway Ninety, and you'll sit there and sit there and sit there, and you, you're just not gonna, if you wanna get over that other lane, you can't get over there. Thank you much.
All right, thank you, sir. Did I miss anyone? Okay, at this time, I'd like to, okay, come on.
I think this might be in rebuttal, that in, in doing an environmental study about the wetlands that are on the property, I think what we should all see as citizens of this city is, so what's gonna be done? You know, we, we know they're there, so what are we gonna do? How are we gonna mitigate them? How are you gonna, are you gonna bulldoze those plants out and set them up somewhere else? And I do have to mention, just because you probably know this, what about the trees? What about all of the beautiful oak trees that are out there, and how is that gonna set? Whether we call them townhomes or condominiums, or, you know, whatever, it's still overdeveloped. If you can take a beautiful piece of property like that and spread it out and keep green space, what a wonderful gem that would be for neighbors up and down. That could be one of those developments that the engineer was talking about, instead of overcrowding and putting these burdens on the city and on the citizens. And I'm assuming at some point, Atkinson is gonna have to be widened. I don't think turn lanes are gonna do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna call up Mr. Creel and get a perspective from the council and, and Ms. Creel and what community development, the way they look at it.
We are typically on development projects where there's been a wooded lot located there for a long period of time, and it's next to a residential subdivision, we run into a lot of opposition because the residents that have lived there for a long time have kind of adopted that as their own private buffer area. And there's nothing wrong with that, but it's just that when you live next to a piece of undeveloped property, there's always the chance that that developer's gonna decide one day to, to develop it. Now, I know that I've been talking to Dr. Bertuzzi about this piece of property for almost fifteen years, and he's finally decided to do something with it. But the good points about this development are that they designed this in a way that's almost a textbook pattern for the way that you should design development. What you do when you have an existing subdivision is you make sure, they call it transitional zoning or stair-step zoning, and what you do is you put the single-family element of the new development right next to the single-family element of the existing subdivision, so they're somewhat buffered in there from the activity that's gonna be further to the west. He has designed the lot sizes to match up with RS-ten zoning, which are at least ten-thousand square feet each. There are easements here. There is a fifteen-foot easement that, if you look on Google, the, is on the resident side. That was a question that came up at the ward meeting. The fifteen-foot easement belongs to the residents that live along Saylor Drive, and they are fenced in on that area, so certainly the developer could not cross over onto that easement. But in addition to that, there's at least one other twenty-five-foot easement on Dr. Bertuzzi's part of the property that wouldn't be developed. So there's forty feet that is separated, and Mr. Stifel and I have talked about possibly there's another twenty-five-foot easement, but that was a construction easement, and we believe that has expired. So there's at least forty feet of easement between the residence neighbor and the, the development site that couldn't have anything built on it. This is not a zoning change. This is a PD. A PD is an overlay district, so you don't have to prove change in the character of the neighborhood or mistake in the original zoning. A zoning change does not expire. A PD does expire. If nothing is done on this property in the next two, in the two years from the date of approval, then I would have to take steps to have the overlay district removed. That's the big difference between a zoning change and a PD. Traffic, the reason that we're talking about traffic right now is because of this development project. Traditionally, cities do not go out and put the infrastructure in before the development happens. They put in the infrastructure in conjunction with the development project. If you go out and spend the money in advance, too many things can happen. The economy may go bad, whatever. So what we do is we actually put in the infrastructure as the development project is happening. Here, we have a developer that's willing to give us the right-of-way that's needed to put in a turn lane that would make, that would at least reduce the, the traffic backlog by half, because you'd have the people that are trying, right now, you have two lanes of traffic, and you have the, you either have to sit at the red light if you're going west and wait to turn either east, either south or north, depending on who's in front of you. But if the turn lane is put in on the south end of Dr. Bertuzzi's property, then all the traffic that could be going to the north will be able to get over into that, merge over into that line and turn north, so it would reduce the length of the lane that would be turning south. The developer has agreed not to connect to, not to have traffic going through during construction or after construction over into the Saylor neighborhood. They've agreed to improve the road up to that point, but to put a gate with a Knox box on there so that only emergency equipment would be able to come in. The concern about traffic on the property, right now, the property for the most part is zone RS-ten, single-family residential, so you could put a number of houses in there that would generate just as much traffic as, as what's gonna happen with the development. The, the tone of the comments seem to indicate that, you know, we're just gonna wake up one morning, and all of a sudden, the traffic is gonna be overwhelming there, but again, this is a phased project where the traffic improvements could be put in in conjunction with the development. I would estimate that this project is probably gonna be at least a six-to-eight-year project from start to finish. Phase one would be, would move forward first, which is the single-family residential, so essentially, the, the buffer area would be built first. That would buffer them from the remaining construction that would go on with the townhomes and with the commercial that's gonna face Pops Ferry Road. Each phase would have to be submitted to, to DRC, and there was some concern that the lines don't match up. It would be DRC's responsibility to make sure those lines match up. As far as the concern about the, the environmental study, I think Mr. Stifel has already answered that, and that's, that's standard on any big development project on undeveloped property. You have to do an environmental study. Concerning the trees, this property is forty-three acres. It would have to have a tree hearing, a public tree hearing, so the public would have input into that. Not only that, the, the tree committee would be involved at DRC, and their recommendations would be made before the, the planning commission as a part of the, the tree hearing. We, we would be in communication, the, the mayor has expressed a, an interest in engaging GRPC to help us with the traffic study, to, to be developed, and recommendations for this intersection. And Mr. Gavin is in the audience now. He's the new executive director of GR Gulf Regional Planning Commission, so if you have some questions for him, he could step up and speak to those. I sent him the, the designs so that they could be taking a look at it. But this is the, this is the way that development projects work. In addition to the easements that were there, the ordinance, the land development ordinance does require a buffer strip between any zone districts, so there would be a wooded buffer strip involved in this. And I think I've covered everything, but with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, you have any, any questions, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I like the final, I've seen all these little maps and stuff like that. How does this affect the bridge? And with the bridge coming across, that was gonna happen in a few years.
Mr. Stifel looked at the design for the bridge and designed this project in conjunction with that. I don't know if you can see it on here.
No, you can't really see much of anything. That's the problem.
Okay. Well, we've got the big design, but it actually shows on here where the bridge is supposed to start, and it starts, if you can see my finger? This is, this is the start of the bridge. This is where it will be located when, when that project does start.
Um, with the, aren't they gonna widen the road? So how much are they gonna widen, that much of the road, take that much property? On both sides or just one side?
On the, on this side of the property?
Right.
Okay.
I'm talking about for the road, they're gonna widen the road.
Well, the widen the road is on Atkinson.
The key thing here is the bridge.
Yeah.
This is all gonna, this is gonna happen, it might take a little, few years.
That's right.
So you can't be not doing anything, because you can't be changing the zone of property, then we gotta turn around and buy it, and it causes it all on the leg for something that's just been sitting there. Say, look at the other side of the corner.
They've agreed about it.
When you're coming back to buy.
Yes, right.
Not now. So that's what I'm trying to find. Nobody seems to know, is it fifty feet, a hundred feet, three hundred feet? They gotta have some idea what the width, the road is gonna be.
That'll be handled, this is a conceptual drawing. That will be handled when it goes through DRC as to how much right-of-way is needed. They have agreed to give us what right-of-way is needed on the property that they control, yes.
And that's a concern of a lot of these people, the traffic on us, they're sensible. When you live there, it affects you.
Yes, sir.
And you said something they probably just didn't like to hear, six to eight years. They're gonna live in a construction area, and now with the, the bridges, when you just said six to eight years to do these different phases, that probably didn't help them any at all.
Well, I was, I was speaking to the development on the property. The infrastructure improvements, I don't believe would drag on for six to eight years. I mean, that's something that would have to be addressed when they do their initial phase. We would have to be looking at that and getting that in. But the, uh, construction on the site, because it's three phases, and, and I'm speaking out of school here because, but just looking at the scope of the project, I would think that it would take at least six years for this to be completed, all the phases to be completed.
Yeah, like the lady said about Atkinson, she'd be stuck up there with dirt all day long, you know? You can see the concern there. And there's twenty-five feet and fifteen feet y'all playing with it. Is that a utility easement or just wide-open easement nobody can use?
It's, it's utility easement.
So it's gonna have that.
Nothing can be built on there.
Yeah, but it's gonna have telephone poles, it'll have to be access for them, the trucks to get back, correct?
Unless they're put underground, which is, which is.
Yeah, they're gonna have to work on them.
What most developments do now is.
No, but we don't know that either, whether it's above the ground, below the ground.
Well, the fifteen feet that's on their side, Mr. Dr. Bertuzzi can't cross the property line, and the twenty-five feet that's on his side, I believe there's already some utilities that are running through there, so.
But that's the reason, the easement, is so you can get, say, a power company truck anything back there to work on it.
That's correct, yes.
So I mean, you gotta explain that. It's just not an easement, like a, an open, open piece of land. You have something you gotta deal with. It happens, you know? Another thing is, I'm kinda like everybody else, exactly what's being built? Like you said, we talked with the first lady with the homes, okay, understandable, and all these different things, somebody said there's no rental, there's no, no condominium. What you actually building? And what type of business is supposed to be in there?
Well, I mean, it's, it's commercial businesses. It will be the equivalent of a shopping center, is what it amounts to.
Well, the width falls on the PD.
That part will be, it can be anything, I mean, it, it's not, you're not gonna see casinos in there, you're not gonna see certain regulated uses in there, you know, like strip clubs and those kind of things. But yes, there could be a nightclub over on that side, but it's away from the houses. All that's gonna be buffered by the single-family phase, the multifamily phase, and then this, which will be on Pops Ferry Road.
So you have a limitation with the PD district actually controls, you can be helped there.
Certain things. I mean, if they came to us with some regulated use, well, that would have to come before the planning commission.
Well, that's been passed on to these Wood Brothers that had a lot of concern. I think eight, nine, ten people come to complaining, now you need to explain it to them, let them know everything you're gonna do, and find out if they're happy or not happy. Right now, I would say they're not happy.
That particular question did not come up at the, did not come up at the ward meeting. That particular question didn't come up at the ward meeting, but I can assure you that this project will be tastefully done. I've had enough conversations with Dr. Bertuzzi to, to know that he wants this to be a high-end development project, especially since he's gonna be living there right next to it as well.
That's fine and dandy, Mr. Creel, but we need to explain that to everybody that's living in that area. I mean, that's, that's the key. That's our job, take care of taxpayers. We don't wanna stop business either. We, nobody has a problem with that. But you have to take care of people living there, and then you go to the next step. And if you're gonna appease them and make them happy, then that's good for the business. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Newman?
Yes, like you said, first of all, can you answer the question, the comment was made about three-hundred feet on the map there?
Six hundred feet.
But on the map, it states three-hundred, she said?
I'm looking at it, it says six hundred feet. It's right. I don't know if you can read that, but it says six hundred feet, and they matched that up with what the gentleman's agreement was between Dr. Bertuzzi and Ed Saylor.
Okay, so we did have a ward meeting, and concerns were, arose, and we went over those concerns. One of them was it not being zero lot lines. They stated it's gonna be high-end homes, and it's gonna be the same width and whatnot as the other homes that are buckled up to it, right? They wanted.
Not, all right, not exactly. Let me explain this. He, he is designing this to meet RS-ten standards, which is, which is low, low density. When Mr. Saylor developed his subdivision, he actually made his lots bigger than what was required. So the people who are living on Saylor Drive have some concerns about, well, now, instead of just having one lot that matches up with one lot on the backside, there may be one lot and a piece of another lot back there. But they are being designed to meet the low-density standards of our LDO.
And it's designed to match up with what, what homes are there? With Florence or some Florence Gardens or?
Uh, no, that's another development. What Dennis was talking about there is that there's concerns about what level of houses are you gonna be building in there? Are you gonna be building small houses in there, or, or what type? And what Dennis was stating, and I'll let him speak to that if you want to, is that these are gonna be high-quality homes. These are not gonna be, uh, low-quality.
Yeah, but it was stated, I can't remember the name of the development. What is it?
Tradition.
Tradition, okay, where, you'd have to explain that, but how they're like, what is it behind? Can you explain it, Dennis? Explain how those homes are set up?
This is not what, what we would typically call a standard conventional subdivision. It's similar, but there are differences. While the, the lots that back up to Saylor Place are traditional, they're, they're conventional, that's basically what, what you would expect to see in a subdivision. When you get away from Saylor Place, closer to the three-hundred and six-hundred-foot buffer towards the west. When you get away from Sailor Place, uh, closer to the 300 and 600-foot buffer, uh, towards the west, uh, you, you have, uh, a different methodology, a different type of design. And that is, you have rear-entry garages, uh, where you don't, where when you drive down the street, the houses are a little bit closer to the street, uh, and, and the yards appear a little smaller, but the houses can be bigger. You know, so you have a bigger structure on the house, more expensive houses with smaller yards. Uh, the, and you don't, you don't drive down the street and basically just see nothing but garages. You know, double car, double car, triple car garage doors, which is not very attractive. So, uh, one of the main philosophies of, and approaches of Dr. Bertuzzi is when people are walking, it's gonna be a very walkable, very green development. That's what his, his main mission is here. He wants people to be able to walk down the streets and look at beautiful architecture and beautiful landscaping, not just garage doors and, and, and grass per se. So, uh, when I brought up the tradition in Florence Gardens, uh, this subdivision has actually been laid out similarly to a, a development called River Ranch in Lafayette, Louisiana. We've kinda modeled it after that. Dr. Bertuzzi really liked that, very nicely done, very high-end. Tradition, uh, up in, in that county, and Florence Gardens over in Dahlport are also modeled similarly. Uh, and that's why I brought those up.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure that was known because it seemed to alleviate some concerns at the ward meeting, and I wanted to, the other councilmen to know what kind of homes we're gonna be approving. Um, there, another concern was, um, the cut-through road. They asked for a lockable gate, so no access constantly in and out, being as a cut road. They, uh, the Bertuzzi, um, developer agreed and said he would put a lock box on there. Um, they asked for a green space and an eight-foot buffer fence between the subdivisions. The Bertuzzi property owner decided he would be able to do that as well, correct? Dennis? Correct?
They used to put property plans between Sailor Development and, uh.
And a green space.
Yeah, so you wipe out the gap.
Um, then the easement, of course, was brought up, and we showed a map stating that the resi, it's on the resident side, so that concern was, um, alleviated. So the biggest concern, of course, is traffic. So I asked at the ward meeting if the developer would be willing to go in a apartment, partnership agreement to show the city and the residents that there, he's willing to be working with us and go ahead and donate that ci, that, uh, property off of Atkinson now, instead of later, just so that we can start to see the alleviated traffic of opening it to be able to turn and whatnot. And he said yes, correct?
Okay, we need you to get a mic so we can hear you.
We're willing to donate the property. We put that in writing to the city. Uh, the, the, as far as donating it today, so to speak, uh, what we really need to do is get it, get the engineer, get together with the engineering department, figure out how much they need. We're willing to donate whatever the city needs.
Okay.
But, but to donate it today, we really don't know how much they need. You know, it, and it makes a difference to us. We don't wanna give away 50 feet more than we need to give away because that could kill, you know, 10 or 15 lots. And so, we really need to sit down with the city and figure out exactly what they need, and we can, we can adjust our plan to, to make that fit.
Well, I don't necessarily feel comfortable approving the plan until we know for sure how much this city's gonna need and.
That's a question that could easily be answered.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Cool. That is a.
After talking with the engineer, they can tell us how much we'll need there to make the turn lane go.
We might wanna push this off till, table this, um, ordinance until next week, until we get an answer. I mean, that's a big question.
This is just the first reading anyway.
Okay.
First reading, okay.
Correct.
Public care, yes.
You're right.
Today is the first reading.
But anyway, um, so when we do approve the ordinance, whatnot, um, we're, we're approving just the first phase, correct?
You're approving the concept. In other words, you're, you're approving the overlay district, which we covered the entire property. But then, they would have to come back with each phase.
Okay.
Uh, and get approval of each phase as I try to.
Okay, that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Dr. Tizell?
Well, first of all, at 6 o'clock, I don't know if you wanna go. I've, I've got a lot of questions. So maybe I could let Mr. Barrett go, and then if you wanna close this hearing, I could raise my questions during the first hearing when we get into the meeting.
Okay.
Just a thought.
That, that'd be fine. We, we can hash this out a little bit later. Yeah, I mean, during our first reading.
There we go.
We can finish up the comments during the first reading.
Yeah.
So we're gonna go ahead and close out, take a five-minute break, and then go ahead and, uh, come on back, if that's okay with everybody. Okay, um, I need a motion to close out the special hearing. Moved by Ms. Lawrence, second by Ms. Newman. Any questions? All in favor? Five, zero. Motion carried. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll start back up.